And then, basically, just how to establish a successful recycling and organics program. So, step one, you know, you just want to make sure you obviously have service. Step two would be to educate your tenants, customers, anyone that is onsite on what goes in each cart. And lastly, obviously sorting into the proper containers, AB 827?
Six.
You know, it is 27, right?
Oh, 827.
Yeah, 827, it is a regulation required that businesses have the front of the house recycling containers with proper signage. So that's when if you go into a Starbucks, you see the three container trash recycling organics. So that's also a great way to start your program. Okay, and then, did you want to get into this, or did you want me to get into this?
Go ahead.
Okay, perfect, so just what goes into your organics? So, we have food waste, yard waste, paper-soiled napkins, or paper-soiled napkins, food-soiled napkins. So do not include loose plastic bags, silverware, plastic containers, foam containers, or hazardous waste. You are able to place your organics directly into the cart, or you use a paper or compostable bag. Recycling, so the main one, the main contaminant in recycling is plastic bags. So, we do not allow plastic bags into our recycling containers. The reason why, a lot of people, well, they're, it's plastic. A lot of the bags are meant to be recycled with the store. They are not recycled at our facility because we have like a big, I call it a teeth machine, and the bags get stuck, and then we have to manually shut everything down, cut them out. So it's just best if we keep bags out of there. And then, what's available to put in there, plastic bottles and containers, aluminum cans, glass bottles and containers, milk cartons, juice cartons, I have that all on this as well. And then, lastly, trash, so diapers, old garden hoses, styrofoam. So styrofoam is not recyclable, that goes in the trash, as well as candy and snack wrappers. Okay, so I get this question a lot too, is when is my service day? I don't know, because it's every other week trash, it's really confusing. So we do have a collection calendar that we put out every year. It is available online, so you'll go to the WM.com website and pull up your calendar, and I have all the information on how to get there as well. And that's just the best way to find your collection day.
And then, just real quick, like, we quickly went over, if you don't want to talk to somebody on the phone, you can happily go online, there's chat, there's an app we have where you can just download it on your phone. You can see when your pickup's gonna be, you can make payments. We also have a website that you can go on and do all that as well, you just need to set up your account. And then, you also have a dedicated website. So, the city of Rich Press has theirs, where they have great information. But we have a dedicated WM website for the city of Rich Press, and it has for residential and commercial. So you can go on there and get all these documents, see everything that is basically in that service guide is on the website. And it's always being constantly updated, and so, please use that as a tool. We've been really trying to promote that a lot because it's such a great resource and so easy to find. And so, I always direct everyone there if they ever have a question about their service. And then, like I said, I already said, please use this as a resource. We're gonna provide everyone our numbers today. If you ever have issues, please reach out to us and we'll get them addressed. And that was all we had, that's our contact info, take, you could take a photo.
I have cards too, if anyone has.
We have cards, but please, please reach out to us, we're here to serve you. And that is it. And I am eager to hear from our participants, and I thank you for caring and being here today. Thank you. So, we, we real, this is for you guys, for us to count that one-on-one with you. And so, we can start with you, and then we can, is that okay? How did you tell me you were gonna start the conversation?
Okay, you were saying something about having magnets showing.
Yeah, so, basically, I was saying that just educating, so educating staff on what goes where. You can also send out, you know, you can send out our newsletter and say, hey, you know, make sure you're putting things in the proper container. And then, we spoke about the charges as well, and what you can do with those, so that's all up to you. And then, I would be happy to, my computer wasn't pulling up, but I, if you want to text me, call me, email me.
Yeah, I got your number.
Perfect, yes, so you know where to find me then. I can get you the locking, what that charge is for a month. Did you have anything else, any other questions?
I think I've covered everything.
Yeah, you did.
Well, when in doubt, like you said, just reach out.
Well, that's.
And then, yeah, like, if you're ever in doubt, like, oh, is this recyclable, is it not?
Throw it out.
Yeah, unless it's, it's pretty simple, it's just paper, cardboard, you know, but, yes. We're not saying you don't have to soap and water it, we just, like I said, we don't want it to be half-full of pasta sauce or stuff.
But, it has like tomato sauce, and it's empty, but it has the residue.
I guarantee you, they're not gonna find that in that, in the video, they're not looking that closely.
I do a quick wash with mine.
It's just to see if there's like big, like, they're putting trash bags in the yard waste, or, you know, putting cardboard in the trash, that's, they're not gonna see like, oh, they left a spot on their glass. No, we're not that, we're not that crazy. But, yeah, but, yeah, just, I mean, if you, like I said, we don't want it like half-full of pasta sauce, and then it crushes and splatters on the paper or cardboard or something.
When we find out there's wrong stuff, it's a month later, so, because I mean, that's what we have.
Oh, when they left, yeah.
And it's like, okay, it was a month before, how am I supposed to?
So, if you want to get them even quicker, I would do your account and do your customer preference as email, because then those will come instant, because by the time we get the letter, it has to go through the process, get mailed, and so it takes longer to get to the customer. But if you go into your account and click your customer communication preference as email, you'll get them quicker because it's instantaneous.
So, I wasn't privy to the question, is it just like pizza boxes and organics, is that what the question is? Or is it?
She was saying that she was concerned with our contamination monitoring, that if people didn't wash out completely, like glass jars, that they were gonna get deemed for a contamination notice. And so, I was just saying, we're not that detailed to see that kind of detail on the, on the image, but we can, we're just looking for big contaminants.
Right.
Yeah, and if you do, I mean, let us know, like, like I said, send us anything, you're like, hey, this, I'm not understanding this, I don't understand why I got this.
Well, I do want some of those magnets.
Oh, yeah, I think Heather has some, actually.
Because, yeah, I'll hand them out, I'll go door to door.
That would be great, and then, like I said, I would be happy to come back and, you know, talk to, if you want to set something up, I can talk to, you know, your tenants about what goes where, I can answer their questions.
Well, it's finding them home all at the same time.
Well, just something to be aware of.
Well, we do resident events, where we do them in the evenings, we can bring, we've done donuts and coffee, we've done hot dog, like, we can do something. No, I'm sorry, we should have had a snack, but. But, we're, we love doing resident events, and it's in the evening when everyone's like home, and at night, and we're there like mingling with the tenants, and we can go over any questions.
Well, I understand that, you know, the importance of recycling, but it's like, you know, because I hear about the deans a month later, and it's like, okay, and like I was saying, I have a tenant who washes out her canned food for her cats. Okay, is that something we're gonna get deemed for?
No, it's only if you're putting the wrong things in the wrong.
In the wrong place, yeah.
But, I mean, most, the cans are not aluminum cans or cans.
Yeah, those, as long as they're going in the recycling, you'll be fine. We just don't want to find those in your trash or organics or something, then you'll get a notice saying, hey.
Okay, well, when in doubt, throw it out.
Yes, yeah, yes. I mean, we wanted to, that's why we're here to educate, but, I mean, we'd rather you not get the notice, right?
Right, I don't want to get it.
That's why I'm like, it's pretty simple, bottles, cans, paper, cardboard, you know, cans.
And then, I did want to put out there as well, if, you know, our technology's great, so let's just say, you know, your, your trash is being dumped, and there's one flattened box, you know, you can let me know and I can look at it, and for that instance, I would, I would help you guys out for that instance. You know, if there's one contaminant, you know, then that's not really, it's less than the 10%, is that what it is?
Yeah, well, we want to promote zero.
Yeah, we want to promote zero, but one box, I can help a property manager.
Yes, I, I, okay. Okay, yes, my name is Sheri Ali, I work at Little Big Report here. I manage, we have about five hundred and fifty property, Sheri, um, Sheri. Okay, Sheri, I work together a lot, because I manage all the apartment complexes.
Ah.
And, one of our big issues is like, we have an Asian, I, this owner here, Nick LeBlanc, over three hundred and seven odd dollars in penalties for things, some of them, and he ended up putting on cameras. Some of them, he's not even, has no control over it because the tenants are doing it, it's drive-bys. We have dumpsters, so we work drive-by, putting it in the dumpsters. I manage a report, eighty units over there, there's actually a hundred, but I manage eighty, same thing. And, and, and so, I call Waste Management, which, the people that we call it, your guys' bosses, are terrible. They don't know, so they transfer them to the next person, but by the time I'm done, I've talked to four people. And mind you, I talk to you guys probably at least once to twice a week, because we have a lot of moving parts, our business. So, I called about locking dumpsters, just for our recycle, and it's fifty dollars to change it, it's fifty dollars more a month, the driver's gotta get out of the trunk, my gosh, really? That's ridiculous. And these owners are struggling with having to pay all these overage fees. Arturo, with the Eftown property, I get a call from him constantly about this. I, we're just at a loss as to what to do, and, 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 the owner, one of the owners that I've talked to is talking about hiding his recycle bins, because he's just gonna have everybody throw everything in the garbage because he's getting penalized so much.
Because they're contaminating, they're putting the trash in the recycling dumpster.
Some, some of them are thinking the plastic bags is the big one. On, on Walmart, bags that says recyclable, automatically they think, oh, it's recyclable, I can throw it in there. Even though, some of your guys' stickers on the front, or all four of you can't read them, it says no bags on there. I have made flyers, I pass them out to every unit, I've made, I put it in my lease agreement that you can't throw bags in there, bags are still in there. Like I said, with one of my owners, he put cameras up, people are driving by, they're throwing their bags. This is, it's not fair to them, and the others, to have to keep paying for this over and over and over again. This month alone, he paid his bills, Waste Management, there was three hundred dollars in overage fees.
Okay, so overage, we would need to look.
I'm in contamination.
Oh, okay, I was like, yeah. Like, overage, you can work with you back.
No, not overage fees.
So contamination, yes, there is a lock fee, if, if it's to swap it out, we can work with you on that fee. If it's the lock fee, it's because the, the driver typically has to have a carry fee, unlock it, there's like a process with it. We have code ones right now here, where it could be like, all the tenants get the code, and then they can all, they all know the code, and then that's how they know that they are only using it, and your tenants.
And I did that with, I also manage businesses, Gayway Center, yeah, eight fifteen gallons, fifteen fifty, with the big, the whole boat, and we finally have to do that with them, because the homeless members were getting money, taking their stuff out, and it's perfectly honest, we don't have that reason. But that owner happened to want to pay the extra fees.
These are apartments, they're, or are they like homes or mobile homes, or?
Well, the ones that I'm talking about are all purpose.
They're all apartments, okay.
The house with dumpster is, and the commercial units, of course.
So, there's a lot of education outreach that we, I know you're saying that they don't, the other thing is that apartments do is eventually they're like, okay, well, you're not gonna keep continuing, you're not listening to us with our education and outreach, so then they spread the amount out amongst the tenants, and then they're like, okay, well, now, you're, right, went up with five bucks extra this month because we're, we're educating and outreach-ing and letting you guys know what to do, but nothing happening, so now we're gonna have to do this, and that gets people, anytime you charge anything, it usually gets people's attention, so we've had apartment complexes do that as well, like, okay, well, we're, as the property owners, aren't gonna keep taking, you know, keep paying the extra, we're gonna spread that out amongst the tenants, and everyone's gonna have to pay extra this month because of the.
Okay, so you put up a camera, you got somebody on camera, I billed them a hundred and twenty-one dollars, whatever it was, put it on their tenant's fee. They ended up paying it because, yeah, it's the law, you have to pay the rent and everything. But still, we're still having the drive-by, so then I have to call the handyman, hey, handyman, can you go over and pull this pallet out of there? It was up there the other day, because trash is coming tomorrow, and get it done with there before they get there, otherwise we're.
I know, it's a process, I know.
It's not fair to us if, that we're getting penalized for all of this, and then you guys sent this letter that I just got today, you can't even see what's, what the contamination is.
I know, that's why I was like, if you can do email ones, then you can, sometimes even go in and see the video.
I've never seen the email.
Yeah, and the video, there's usually a video that you can see as well, and like, if you're, like, that's why we're here today, you can email us, we'll send you the video of it, and that way you can see what it was. Because it captures in a photo only like a snapshot in time of that service, and so, we're in hopes that it's catching the right moment, and, and the right photos getting chosen to be sent to you. But in the case that you don't, please call us directly, you won't go through, have to go through, you know, the challenges that you said you faced with customers directly, you go directly to us, and then we can send you the actual video. So, yeah, and we, now I'm glad you have our contact info, because you can just reach out.
Yeah, my customers have become my best friends. Hey Quincy, what's going on with this? Quincy, wait, what about this? So, I would be more than happy to assist you with any questions, concerns, going forward.
Yeah, it's just extremely frustrating, and because I'm with the apartments for less than, and cover my quarters for single-family homes, I deal with you guys all the time, and he does, and just completely frustrated. And then, also to the mayor, I would like to apologize to you, you get blasted on Facebook from eighty to a hundred people about this whole Waste Management garbage, which our previous mayor did, and nobody's even here. So, you know what, complain all you want, people, be here to complain to you guys.
Correct.
They're over Waste Management, and you're, somebody's gonna start hearing, certain relayers, but they're just wasteful, wasteful, and irritating.
Well, and the Department of Waste Management and Councilman Blades, I think you guys have held, how many?
Yeah, I, I know, this is like the.
I know, I at least, there, there's been several, I at least, like, stood up there and answered questions for two, town halls. That doesn't necessarily like get us off the hook or anything, there's a, there's a lot of really valid points that can be had, even a lot of programs being implemented, and I think they're good, and there's some of them that we can mitigate, there's some of them that we couldn't, sorry, I should stand up. We tried to mitigate as much as we could, we tried to just do the very, we tried to make the best out of a situation that wasn't great. Nobody liked having SB 1383 thrust upon us, so we made the very best out of it that we could, and we knew we weren't gonna make everybody happy, but we just did what we could. But I would like to think, in us working with Waste Management, that we're getting better, that things are getting better. And if they're not, then this is, this is the time, because they are proactive, and I've called them a few times for the public. People will send me Facebook messages, texts, phone calls, and I will get hold of you guys, like, hey, this is Councilman Blades, here's an address of somebody that's having this problem, it's not my name, sometimes I just didn't hear, sometimes I didn't hit the right person. And I've also noticed there's a difference between calling a, the international hotline, where you may get somebody who doesn't know our area, and then calling the local representatives, and the local representatives can guide you a lot better, because every area has different rules and regulations. Sorry, I could rattle on, because I was, I was there for it, but.
That was perfectly said.
And also, like, in my mind, I didn't know that, I was just thinking residential concerns, I hadn't even thought of commercial concerns, so, I appreciate you coming and sharing that, because I, I just ignore the fact that there are other concerns out there rather than, you know.
Or your commercial concerns are, is people who don't subscribe to trash service, would like to use a trash bin in their house, which causes problems, people with multi-family.
I do Gayway Center for running homely, I'm very into Rich Press Boulevard, and that's the worst because it's sort of by itself, and it's constant, I'm constantly applying for that, and, you know.
Well, unfortunately, because the residents who pay, oh, these trash bins are free.
Yeah, yeah.
That area, yes. But thank you for listening, but I hope it's not going anywhere, it's a grace of.
We got numbers now, we have some numbers.
Someone just missed, you say, it's only showing advertisements, just for record, since the subject hit off.
It's on our website. At the moment, this meeting, I don't think you pull or not part of the city, and not representative of the city.
Do we have the five of us?
It's on our website.
Yeah.
It's on our own city website, in Port Center.
Yeah.
So, I had a question, since you brought it up with commercial residences and everything, do apartments, facilities like that, and other commercial businesses, restaurants, do they have a tolerance level for the amount of, you know, contamination that goes in? Because, you know, there's, there's not much a supermarket can do if I, if I dump, you know, the inorganic garbage in their dumpster. And it sounds like a lot of this could be, could be eased, like, per case and everything, you know, if, if it's not per, if it's not per customers or tenants and everything, or taking the blame for, you know, who knows, who could have come through and dumped whatever. And I understand, I mean, that could feasibly happen to anyone, anyone could drive down, hop, and throw your dumpster. But at the same time, though, it's not.
Yeah, true.
I'm employed by Waste Management somewhere, and I pay over six hundred dollars a year in contamination fees at the Army Park, at the fairgrounds.
Hey, but we're working on getting a resolution.
And they help me out when it's feasible, but sometimes I don't even complain because it's so obvious, and it's the same problem. At the fairgrounds, people just drive by, and it's easy access to those dumpsters. We are implementing locks.
Do you own the fairgrounds?
Oh, no.
Then that's not coming out of your pocket.
No, no.
Okay.
It comes out of my budget, which is.
It's a different story, but it's coming out of your pocket.
Yeah, no, but the, I'm gonna try the locks, especially now that they got the code. Because I, I had key locks when I had Weeterson, so that was a problem with employees, the night crew took it home.
Yeah, no, the, the code one's best, because then you can just share that with the people that need it, and then everyone, the only those people should be using it. They're the only ones that know the code, so then, it, it helps with that. That's why a lot of the businesses should, would go with the, the lock.
So, it, it sounds like, you know, it's, it's a common problem and everything, you're going to have, you know, kind of a, again, we're not gonna discuss residential and everything, if you're going to have a publicly available, you know, dumpster, garbage cans.
Right.
And it's like, I, I don't know if this is something from the state that you can't do anything about, because it sounds like, you know, there should be some way to alleviate, you know, if there's so much waste that doesn't belong in the apartment building's garbage, it's not necessarily their fault.
Right, and so.
But, you know, like, perhaps, perhaps, a letter to the property owners and everything, we are finding this waste, you know, please educate your tenants and everything about it, you know, might be more appropriate than, here's a fee.
That happens multiple times before they find.
Yeah, we don't, we don't just start finding right away, I mean, they get notices, we'd have to look at how, what the process is. Usually, typically, it's like two warnings, but it's a lot of education and outreach first. And so, then, then if nothing changes, then it, we have to go into charging a fee for that, because then, we have to go dispose that as trash, and so, and then, so it just, it, that's why there's a fee, and we, our hope is that by doing that once, that you're like, okay, no, I know, when I get it with the, with the multi-family, that it's hard to control, because tenants move in and out, but she sounds like she's doing all, she's educating, she's putting it in the lease, I mean, everything, so that's why I'm like trying to provide different things I've seen at other places, to kind of get them to understand kind of what's going on. With the stuff with the people dumping that, I, and maybe if they, now that there's cameras, I don't know if there's something with the city or code or something, you can't.
Catch the license plate.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
I see it happening, I can go out and chase them, but, you know, I'm older.
I wouldn't recommend that, though, yeah.
Yeah, we don't want you being a little close.
And I know that space is limited, and I don't know how this goes with city, but I know that a lot of people have built enclosures and things like that, to steer people away from, you know, unlocking the enclosure, and with their own lock sometimes, making sure it's unlocked for service, with our lock as well, so that's also something.
And it's actually, except when the, by the dumpster on the ground, people may just throw it over, if they're willing to dump it.
But I've seen, from, from the new ones that I've seen in town, which, like I said, I don't know the city things, I don't know the space, but I have seen ones with covers over completely now, so that no one is able to throw anything in, crows can't come in, that type of thing, so.
But how many emails have you sent from our apartment building?
Numerous, yeah, I mean. And like I said, it incorporated into the lease agreement, where they have to sign it, but it still happens, so, it's, it's like finding this tenant, a hundred and twenty dollars, whatever it was, a hundred and twenty-one, you know, I guess she will be there.
Yeah, because typically what they do, they're like, okay, well, we caught you here, and you're paying the fee, you know, and then they're like, okay, but it's just with the other ones.
It's just catching, yeah, all of my, just all of my tenants have the cameras, the other places don't, so. I guess for the owners that don't want to put up the cameras, it might be, it might have to be forced out.
Well, at the Eftown, part of us, we do have the enclosure, but the trash bins are bigger than it is. So, I mean, a lot of it is just catching them when they're doing it, but I can't be there twenty-four seven.
A lot of this is, we, we call people, we have to throw trash, and we'll send them along, but, do the trash.
Yeah, or because it's every other week, your trash cans get full, and oh, well, just take it. So I know that probably happens a lot of the drive-bys, is that's what they're doing, their trash cans are full.
So, with that in mind.
I have sat in a long spark.
When is, is there a potential for the city in which we're going to negotiate to get weekly trash pickups? And if so, what type of, what's the ballpark estimate that citizens would be looking to pay for something like that?
So, yes, everything's open for negotiation, so if the city comes to us and say, hey, we want to reevaluate this and look at it, then we'll definitely sit down. I know, when it was looked at several years ago, so, obviously, we'd have to rerun the numbers, this was going off of several years ago, it, you'd be looking at an extra like ten dollars a month, so that would be the, the ballpark.
So that, that would be the real question, is if the public wants to pay more for the trash?
Correct, yeah.
And then, right now, to add an additional, it's eleven dollars a month.
We have a weekly pickup, it's a really low fee.
But you're still paying that ten dollars a month.
Yeah, unless, so.
Well, with the weekly pickup, because everybody on Facebook complains about supplies, the smell, everything, and that's why they're wanting a pickup every week. Because, especially in our summers here, about a hundred and fifteen degrees, it reeks, so.
So, I do have another question, and this is probably me just being a nerd, but, since the new contract has been in place, what have the numbers been like on citizens using the organic and the recycling bins? Like, the implementation of this, have we, have we seen this been an effect that we're actually seeing more people utilizing the organics and the recycling?
So, yes, there are people, okay, so it, it goes both ways, because we just recently audited the waste. I'll start with the beginning, so, yes, it did increase diversion, I think before we were at like thirteen percent, it went up to like thirty percent, because we added the extra container, so it did increase that. But, what we're seeing. Um, but what we're seeing is that because sometimes over the every other week, there are people that aren't using the containers properly and using like their organics cart as an extra trash cart. So are, um, or the recycling sometimes even. And so we're trying to implement a, a better, um, a more continuous monitoring of just education and outreach, no charges or anything for residential because we're seeing an uptick in contamination. So it's pretty big out here. And so we're trying to work on getting continuous monitoring established out here so that we can start notifying residents more often of what we're seeing. Because right now it's not that often and, um, it's not a big pool of people. And so we wanna get that opportunity, that's just an internal thing, where we wanna do to educate the public. Because, yes, it's, the usage is up, so, yeah, there's tonnage being increased. But we wanna get people utilizing the containers the right way. Because we're seeing about a thirty, forty percent, like potentially contamination percentage. And we wanna get that down. So we're working on a, an edu-, like I said, we're gonna work on doing that smart truck stuff with the, where we're seeing the, the contaminants and then notifying the customers right away, just educating. And so we're gonna work on that. But it has increased the diversion because people had to learn to sort. Cause there are people that are enjoying it, that do it, that are, you know, wanna do the right thing. And they found it beneficial, like, yeah, I don't have as much trash. But we have bigger families in some cases where, you know, they need the extra trash cart. So there's just, it's dependent. I've heard both things. I, I see both sides. So I know there's people that are using it and it's successful and they're, you know, they're lowering. The whole point of it is to get you to use it properly so that you get that material out of your trash and into where it needs to go. So it should lower your capacity, the amount you're putting in your trash. Um, and I know that has been successful in a lot of people's situations. But there are those people that are, you know, no, I'm not, I'm.
It all goes to the landfill.
Yeah, so we do have that, if, you know, so we'll, we're gonna ramp up the education here soon.
So have you, I guess, have you seen the usage rates? Did, pretty soon has a plateau or?
We're like steady now. So when we first implemented, we were all excited. I remember we did a town hall, we're like, yes, like, look, it went from fifteen percent to thirty percent, you know, diversion. And so, yes, it did, but now it's steady. Yeah, so, and we expect that because it's like everyone's kind of using it, who's using it and that's. But we wanna increase the, the good material and the diversion. We wanna get that in a better place. Yeah. Did you have anything? I know you're usually very support, you, I know you do what's right. You've been our little champion.
I've been very supportive.
I know, I love you when I, when I.
I think so, last month. My, my trash can went away.
The little one?
Yeah, it just disappeared.
It fell, probably?
In a truck.
Yeah.
They didn't pick up my organics for almost a month.
Okay, so we need to, we need to look into that.
When I called, I sat on hold for three hours while I was chatting with waste management. They, nobody ever answered.
Okay.
And, I mean, I've chatted, I messaged, I think I emailed, I did everything I could to get that organics picked up.
Okay, well, here's your customer service right here.
I'm the local representative, but I can work cell phones.
Well, I wasn't gonna ask because it, mine is specific.
Well, I definitely work.
Yeah, no, we're specific to this community, so, yes, we're your direct customer service.
Well, I think there was a new driver because I have carryout. And I don't know who knew that, because I watched him drive by and pick up the neighbors. So he didn't know that mine was right, you know, in front of the house.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering is, you know, you're talking about education. You see who's here. You have to get to the people that aren't here.
No, that's why we say we're gonna monitor more aggressively the, the cameras and send notifications to people to say, hey, we're noticing you're not putting the right things in your, in your container.
Okay, but everybody needs to know.
Yeah, no, it's, it's gonna be contin-, when we, when we do continuous monitoring, we'll do that for several months. That's gonna flag a lot of people that are not doing things the right way, right?
When I moved here, I didn't know I could get a small trash can.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know about carryout. I didn't, I knew about both the pickup because I think that's the thing everybody has. People move here, they don't know anything about any of it. They don't know.
And that's why we try to be at every event thing.
Nobody's gonna come, they don't care enough to come.
So what if, I know City Nights is this Friday, right? But, and I know you guys help out, you know, do you guys have a booth that we can have people?
We've had some, some, but it wasn't, like, sometimes it wasn't the right fit. I, and so we're, we can definitely like work on getting there again and, and doing that again.
Maybe not this Friday, but whenever we do the next one, have, have the informational. And then, like you get to your point that you can provide more education to individuals that are walking past or.
Yeah.
I mean, probably if they had.
People need to know when they move here. Not when they go to a, an event. I didn't, I didn't know a lot of it. You know, I see my neighbors putting plastic bags in the side porch.
So when a person, when a person sets up an account with us, say they're a new home built or something, and they call in or they're transitioning from, you know, one o-, uh, owner to the next, there's typically a welcome guide that customer service emails or mails out to that person. And it's basically a service guide that gets sent to them. So everyone should get that. Do people read it? I don't know. So that's the problem. Cause we do newsletters, how many newsletters do we do a year?
I have like twenty-five here right now.
No, but how many do we send in a year?
Um, I believe it's.
Quarterly?
Quarterly, yes.
So quarter, every quarter, if, if you get a invoice mailed to you, you get a newsletter in your invoice. If you get, if you signed up to receive it digitally, you get it digitally. So those go out four times a year. For commercial, I think it's, is it four as well? So there's newsletters that go out. We have chip porting at every event within booth. And so we, we try to be everywhere to get the word out. And so, and the welcome guide, like, if you call and you set up an account with us, you get sent a welcome guide, which is basically a service guide detailing everything. And unfortunately, I don't know if everybody reads it. And so, um, we've done, I mean, social media stuff, like, there's just so much we've done. And we, like, these town halls, like, we try to do, hit every little angle we can. And so, we'll continue to do that.
Where is the waste management yard?
It's on County Line Road.
Two thirty-seven County Line Road.
I think the, I wanna say the address is on.
No.
The animal shelter?
Yeah, right next to the animal shelter.
And the recycling, where is it sorted at?
So on this. Oh, the recycling goes to Pearson's yard. And then it goes to our yard in Sun Valley, and it gets sorted there. So we sort out all of the recyclables, so, cause all the bottles gotta get sorted, the cardboard, the paper, all that goes.
The plastic bags that we're being charged for eight or dollars for, those can be taken out of the recycle yard?
No, that's what she's saying, they, when it goes through the process, it jams up the machine. So then we have to cut out the pa-, the plastic bag. And then we have to stop the whole conveyor belt.
Where do you guys process that go through the?
It goes through at Sun Valley at our, our MRF. It's a material recovery facility where it has, all the recycling goes through there and it all gets sorted through by machines and can sort it.
But they get to take the bags out then?
When it, when it first goes through the belt, it gets stopped, jammed in the machines, like the teeth machine she's talking about, it gets jammed in there. And so we just can't have them going in there. So we, we try, like, we're like, if you put it, if you have to back it, put it in a paper bag or something, I don't know. So there's somebody, or get a container and fi-, and just empty it. All they have to do is empty it. And I get it for multifamily as it's a challenge for California uh, with getting multifamily tenants to invest into recycling and do what they're supposed to, like hard. Um, you have to constantly, constantly be educating and out, it's, it's a constant. Cause there's turn, it's starting over all the time and making sure people understand. So I get where your frustration comes from. And that's why I'm like, just get with us, we'll work with you on, on finding solutions and working together.
Ashley, I, I was gonna say too, I don't wanna blame the state, but I think that when they had said, you know, everyone has to do this, obviously, they weren't thinking about the little things of, you know, there are multifamily properties that, you know, have these issues or, you know, things like that. So that's why, you know, now these things are coming about. And it's, you know, our job to work with you guys and the state and, you know, figure out solutions to these, so.
We don't get a pickup charging you, I, I don't, for a plastic bag. And I don't want you to get that sentiment. So I want you to work with us, yeah.
Personally, but I think that your company's making a lot of money out of this. And, and, and a lot of our owners, my mom and I own, um, several properties here in Rich Chris, one by one. And, you know, it's all about the money, it's, it's making the money. You can't live on nine hundred dollars in social security, uh, so you gotta get your money from somewhere and. You, you're all being eaten away by a pizza box in a recycle, uh, or a plastic bag that says recyclable.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any sense.
So I do wanna clarify that as well, just the recycle symbol, just because that can get eh, us into trouble a lot, residents into trouble a lot. A lot of the times when that little recycle sign, like, I should say, like, for example, plastic bags, like store plastic bags, usually that means to recycle them back with the store.
But you do not know that.
Right, I understand. And then also same thing, like, I've seen air filters in the recycling, you know, just because it says to recycle them. But those are supposed to be obviously shipped back to, you know, the, where they were purchased to be recycled. So it's just what we deem recyclable is what is on the newsletter. That's the best way to go buy it.
And so the magnet would have all that information.
Yes, it would.
So we're getting them.
Yeah, and we, yeah, and we'll, we'll work with you, like I said. That's the reason why the bags can't go into our program. And I'm more than hel-, I, I know you probably don't wanna do it, but I can take you to the facility and show you firsthand.
It's fun.
How the process, it, it is very interesting. But we, that way you could see, we're not just saying to say, like, it really does take time and out to process. And it's all about like how, yeah.
I've seen videos on, on, on them doing the processing, uh, you know, some of the stuff, recycling and stuff. I, I, I just don't get the bag thing, I, I don't know. I don't see three hundred dollars or a hundred dollars for a bag either.
Yeah, well, and it shouldn't be, so that's what you're getting charged with.
It's a bag that you can get charged down about two minutes.
Yeah, so that's why I wanted to see what, so that we can, we can show you the videos and it's all that. So we can work with you on that.
Like I brought up how some tenants will put their recyclables in a plastic trash bin. And they throw it in the recycle, but then it's not supposed to be there. And they're, they think they're doing the right thing. Right. And now that you're telling me glass can go in there, good.
It doesn't have to be squeaky clean.
Just as a rinse.
Did you have anything specific?
Yeah, sorry I'm late, so if I ask a question.
No, that's okay.
Been asked before, but, um, I'm wondering if the price hike might be because we're getting five hundred more low-income housing and that has to be paid for somehow?
No.
Uh, the rate, the trash rate, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, ours isn't dependent on, it, it's based on a set formula in our agreement. It has to do with like CPI and, and like it, a specific cost. It has, it doesn't have to do with homes being built, so, you know.
And are you guys gonna be able to handle that capacity?
Yes. And I know you're a good recycler, I remember talking to you.
Thank you.
Did you have something in the box? No? Well, thank you for being here, we appreciate you taking the time. Um, like I said, it shows your commitment. Like you said, we see it all over social media. I don't like social media because of that, it's just a feeding ground for negativity, so, um, but, uh, we, we listen to.
People just need to be here and be educated.
Yeah, I.
I mean, this is one of the things I was saying, I apologize to them for. People complain about you guys all the time, but nobody's here to say anything.
And we want them to come here, that's, you know.
Get on there and tell them.
So one of the things on social media that people reach out to me was the diaper disposal or, or that type of thing. And I think they wrote a picture.
Yes. Yes.
Two three seven County Line Road.
Yes, so there's a odorous items bin, specific for odorous material.
Okay.
So if there's people.
Have to check in with the attendant, wasn't it?
Do they, do they check in?
There's no attendants, you gotta check in. You typically don't have to check in as long as you have an account. As long as you've done it before. You come in, uh, we'll make sure you have an account. Um, and once you, once you can verify, you go through and that's it, you just keep going every time without checking in every time.
I'll be frank with you, I'll check in, I just drop off.
I don't think we're sticked around.
Yeah, run.
If we do see something that's not supposed to be there, we'll, we'll obviously approach you and get, you know, questions going on.
Yeah, if we're seeing like an increase in just people bringing, then we're like, okay, we need to get better control, so, yeah.
And so, and on the white bin, so if we have extra recycling, just take that. So there, instead of just Amazon and.
Yeah, especially during like the holiday time, yes, where you have a lot of, uh, packages. Yes, it's basically for overflow if you don't wanna, it's like, you know, you don't wanna get an extra. The recycling cart is free if you want an extra one. Um, you can get that for free and the organics cart, an extra one. But if it's just like a one-time thing and you just wanna bring your bottles, cans.
Or you got a big box, you ordered something big that's not gonna fit in your cart, you could bring it.
Yeah, but we, yeah, so you kind of break it down a little bit, cause then it'll take up the whole space.
Yes, always flatten.
And no styrofoam.
Yes, I said that earlier.
Oh, I've learned that from.
Yes.
Actually, I have an easy question, more curiosity, though. Um, the man camp, as it's called, just east of County Line Road?
Oh.
Oh.
Okay, that, it's in the next county, it's outside of the city. Uh, does waste management service that facility?
Yes, we do.
Tell us, what, what are the particulars of that service, please?
As far as particulars, as far as?
Uh, do the, um, trucks come and just pick up a dumpster and dump it?
Yep.
Or they, that's it?
They, they just have dumpsters.
Uh-huh. They're not required, though, to segregate the items into recyclables?
Yes.
You're nodding, that means no or yes?
No, they, they do, they are required.
Oh, oh, they are?
Yeah, they do have a recycle and a, um, uh, trash bin there.
And do they have a weekly service or?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
Okay. My friend, thank you.
Um, I'm wondering, and this is just from Facebook. A lot of cities don't do this? This organics thing, which I thought it was California law.
It is. So, yes, the jury is, you might be getting confused with the county. Um, the county is working on a, a program right now. They, they've been working on it for several years. Uh, we've all been waiting to see what was gonna happen there. But we're, they're still putting together their plan because they go through a whole different process.
What I'm talking about Kern County, I'm talking about.
Oh, statewide, yes. Everyone has to do this.
Well, how come they're not? I mean, people are, and I don't know, you know, I don't know these people. They're saying, why do you have to do that? Cause we don't do that.
If, what I've learned from talking to other, other cities and other city managers and city leaders is that there are some small towns that just haven't caught up yet. And they're working with the state, like delaying, delaying, but they have to give them a plan. They have to present a plan, and this is why we aren't where we're supposed to be by state law. And they have to follow up on that plan. I forget the name of the plan, but we had to do the same thing. We had to file a plan that pushed us out a year before we implemented. And we worked with the state back and forth with Cal Recycle, just to have the plan that we have. We worked for well over a year and a half to get what we have. There are some communities, and it's an even smaller number than that, that can receive waivers from the state. But it's very, very specific, like very high elevation. They have to meet a set of criteria. It has to be remote, small population, different elevations, and those are so rare. So you can pretty much guess that blanket across the state, it's required. Now, uh, up in a lot of northern California areas, those places already have it. So it wasn't, not much of an impact. There's some communities in Southern California already have it, not much of an impact. What really strikes me differently is that Rich Chris worked up the, the. What really strikes me definitely is that Rich Crest worked up the, the trash every two week thing. And, uh, some people like it, some people don't, and that, that's okay. The reason we did that is for cost, but also it has helped diversion, there's a lot of different reasons. But any peo- anybody who's saying, well, we don't do it, you guys are doing it for no reason, there's state law that's requiring it, it's just some communities haven't done it yet because they're dragging the fee, and they have to answer to the state for that. And there are some communities that I know of, and I'm not gonna front them out now, that will have to face fines from the state if they don't give this down, and it's a lot of money. So is that SB thirteen eighty-three? And SB thirteen eighty-three is not just singular either, it's a dual, the bill is two things. It is both this, well, this residential, uh, stuff, but there's also a repurposing of food that goes along with SB thirteen eighty-three. That was a huge part, I think probably why it got through legislature is because food has to be sent back to, like, out of grocery stores and restaurants. If it's edible, it has to go back through a program, the Salvation Army, in this area, that we just redistribute. Other areas of different, different places to collection. But SB thirteen eighty-three is a little bit more complex than just organics in the residence.
Did you have anything for us? Sorry, we're just playing around the room, giving everybody. Well, I see some people on my, or are they, like, really asking for?
You can ask if they have questions, you're allowed, so if you have a personal.
Hello, sorry, does, um, the online participants have any questions for us?
No, no, okay, okay. Well, you guys have our contact info? Customer service right here. So you don't, just call us.
Get your number.
Yes, we don't mind.
Um, so, thank you again, thank you.
Ashley, we appreciate you guys coming to the town hall, giving your time.